So I'm going to call the meeting to order of the August 20th, 2019 meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. President John Torch, George Kingston, Ty Richardson, myself Russell Denver. And pursuant to Mass General Law, I need to announce that we are recording this meeting for two minutes and that Elcat is recording the video of this meeting. If there's anyone else who is recording the meeting, please identify yourself and your organization. Hearing none, I'd like to take the first order of business, which is the approval of the July 16th, 2019 meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
A motion to approve and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay. None. Item passes. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the first item?
Yes. Site plan waiver request, SPRW 2019-23. Home office for car hauler business. Request by applicant for site plan waiver for a home office at 34 Ann Street. Assessors parcel ID 24-28-73 on .20 plus or minus acre in a residential C zoning district. Applicant Youssefi Fomor, 34 Ann Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Continued from July 16th, 2019.
I'm his wife, I'm here, he is right here.
Okay. Why don't you step forward and tell us what your plan was or is.
I don't know what to say, but like, was just like...
Let me see.
Request for the opening, like, office at our house. Like, I don't know what to say because this is first time for me and what should I say?
So at the last meeting, there were residents there who had indicated that there were, that you were parking commercial vehicles on the property and on the street.
Just one.
Okay. Which I think that you've heard from the planning director that that's not legal in this town to have commercial vehicles parked overnight, nor is it legal to have commercial vehicles parked on your residential lot unless you can, unless they are screened from view. So they are either always in the driveway or always in the garage, or they're screened, they're screened from the street so people couldn't...
Can it be on the driveway?
Pardon me?
Can it be on the driveway?
No, it needs to be screened so it's not seen from the street. So just sitting in a driveway is not sufficient.
Okay.
Screen, I mean so that you can't see.
I got it. Yeah. Now, because we had the trouble to find a place, now I got, I found a place that we are going to park the car there, and probably this is not going to be a trouble anymore.
Okay.
Wait, can we ask where?
Sure.
Where he's going to be parking it?
Yeah, I have here, it's Bulldog's. It's on 55 Deer Park Drive, East Long Meadow, MA.
Deer Park is the...
Yeah. The Bulldog, where is Bulldog here?
It's like somewhere near here, it's like two miles away.
I know where it is.
Yeah, but like...
I'm just trying to remember which, which is 55.
Yeah, you can look online, and I talked to the owner of the building, and he said that we can park on the, like, backside of the building. He has like a big parking lot there.
And do you have something in writing?
No.
That says that from him?
No, because like...
So where's the vehicle being parked right now?
Right now, he is not home, like, the vehicle is not home, my husband is away for two weeks.
Okay.
That's not Bulldog, that's GMH Fence.
I thought so.
Yeah. Okay. They've got tons of room there. Okay, so basically, the home office, you can go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
The home office is allowable. Okay, there's nothing wrong with that, but you can't park that vehicle on the street or in the driveway.
Okay.
And if, if you do, then the building inspector will come out and give you a ticket. So that's just not appropriate for a residential area.
Okay, but can he come, like, just for half an hour, like, around?
Well, not for more than an hour at a time.
Yeah.
Okay, but he can come just like to be, to drop some things from the car, like, when he's coming from the tree.
Yeah, as long as he's not parking it there, especially if he's not parking it overnight.
Okay.
That's the big issue.
Okay.
I mean, clearly, we have, through the chair.
Yeah.
We have tradespeople who are working on a house and they park there during the day, you know, their, their commercial vehicles. And that's, that we allow, right?
Also, George, I'm looking at the map and it says GMH Fence, but behind it is Bulldog's Apparel. So it looks like it won't be GMH Fence, but just the same, it looks like there must be some room there.
Yeah.
I think it would be prudent for the board to get a copy of any kind of agreement they have confirming the fact that they have permission to park there. And I think we should, if, if we're going to make a motion on this, I think the motion should include that in no way, shape, or form should any vehicle like this be parked in front of the residence longer than an hour.
Yeah.
It may be the ordinance anyways, but I want to confirm that because the intent of the ordinance is for the neighborhood to have harmonious living environment, and having this kind of a vehicle parked in front of your house doesn't create that.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's great what you're doing, but you're also in a residential neighborhood and you've got neighbors you really need to be thinking about, that's all.
And I would, and I would just say this to anyone, so I don't think we want to see the, they park it from 1:00 to 2:00 in the afternoon, move it, and then come back and park at 3:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon type of situation.
No, definitely not.
So...
Follow the intent of the...
Now, if we're going to pay for the parking lot, of course, we're going to keep it there, park it there.
So last time, unless there's other questions from the board or the petitioner, the last time we did allow the public, if they had any comments, if they wanted to be come up and address the board on this specific issue, they could do so. So I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address this specific issue or not.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Okay. I believe he's a renter. I don't know whether that makes any difference or not. I don't have a problem with somebody running a business out of their house and trying to advance themselves, that's what this country is all about. I just want him to be a good neighbor. And he's, up to this point, he's really not being a good neighbor. I have some pictures on my phone where he backed the trailer across my mom's front yard, three quarters of the way across the frontage. It's just unacceptable. I have a couple of pictures of the both sides, the left and right side of the house. There's absolutely no way he can park that vehicle out of sight, either the truck or the trailer with the commercial plates on it, because there's just no way to get the thing in the backyard.
Mm-hmm.
But the most important thing is, is I just like him to be a good neighbor. Everyone else on the street is responsible, they take care of their yards. We just went, I just don't want it to turn into a bedlam situation where everyone in the neighborhood, because one guy is doing it, everybody else is going to start doing it.
Right.
And that's just not a good scenario, you know? I just want him to be a good neighbor. As far as the business thing, he wants to play on the computer and run a business, that's all well and good, but...
Right.
According to the next door neighbor, he's parking those cars along the street, unregistered, at times, when he, when he unloads them off of the trailer. So he, he has, the neighbor has said, fortunately, the neighbor is on vacation, so he couldn't come, but the neighbor did say he called the cops on him one time, they came over and gave him some kind of a warning for that.
Okay.
And apparently, it hasn't been done again since.
Okay.
But as far as the business thing, I don't have a problem with that, advancing yourself, but it's the good neighbor thing.
So you did hear that they've had an arrangement with Bulldog and they will be parking it there? So the only, the, the kind of home office component of the business will be in the house, is what you're telling us?
It's like nothing, he's doing everything by, from his truck.
Okay.
But like, we have to just register like somewhere.
Right, yeah.
What's the address?
Nobody's coming, like, he's just like, just like me.
And, and as he said, so if for some reason you are, he's parking, you know, regis, parking vehicles on the street, that's operating the business there, and you would be ticketed and fined for that. So just so you're aware of that.
Like, we were parking our...
Your personal vehicle's fine, but if he's parking vehicles that he's picking up and delivering, and he parks them on the street...
No, he is not, he's never parked there.
That would be operating the business and that would be against...
He never leaves the, someone else's cars on, like, on the street, never.
Okay.
Maybe someone is coming to us, like, to visit, yes, but he never, he never drops the cars, like, on the street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just want George to be responsible.
Yep, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address that issue? Okay, hearing none.
May, may George make one more comment from the chair. The maximum capacity of any commercial vehicle in a residential area shall not be more than one ton in rated capacity. And the trailer shown carries two cars, which I think is greater than one ton, no harm. So just for the record.
Okay. So do I have a, a motion from a board member on this issue?
I'll make a motion to issue a waiver of site plan for the home office only and not for the vehicle.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
So I would like to see if someone would like to offer a friendly amendment to that contingent upon the petitioner providing the Director of Planning and Community Development authorization from the property owner where they're going to store the vehicle.
In agreement.
I'll amend my motion to that.
So there's been a motion made, it's been seconded, all in favor.
Oh, one other thing we did talk about, maybe we don't have to bring it up, less than an hour if it's going to be parked on the street.
Well, that's in the bylaws, yeah.
But that's kind of like, can't even do that anyways because it's over a ton.
Right. Okay. Okay. So a motion made, it's been seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay. It passes. Okay. So you're going to have to get written notice from Bulldog that they're allowing you to store that vehicle in there, on their property.
Okay.
Okay, and bring it to the...
Should I bring it?
To the planning office.
Okay.
Okay.
So through the chair, I just may clarify, so there is no parking at all of this, of the hauler at this residence? Not for an hour? Not at all? Drop off is not allowed?
No drop off of vehicles, no pickup of vehicles?
No hauler.
No hauler?
No hauler, undecided at all.
I mean, that's a weight issue.
Yeah, that's a weight issue, that would be, yeah.
Okay, okay.
The only, through the chair, the only way we would allow a larger truck is if it's making a delivery to the house, or it's a person working on the property to build something or, you know, whatever.
By law, and...
So Mr. Ephraimah can't be going to 34 Ann Street with his vehicle?
Right.
If you, if he needs to bring something to his home, someone has to get it from him, so the vehicle won't be traveling in the neighborhood.
I mean, just the vehicle, not the trailer, he can...
Ah.
Yes.
Yes.
The vehicle, we're fine, no trailer.
Yeah, he can drop the trailer.
No trailer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It's only for, yes, sir?
I had another question.
Sure.
Is it okay for someone to park a commercial pickup, let's say a pickup truck big enough to haul a car hauler, has to have commercial plates?
Yes.
Commercial plates in the town of East Long Meadow, is legal to park in the driveway, or that has to be parked in a garage, or behind a fence, or behind the house?
That is the way the bylaw is written.
So even the, even the truck cannot be parked there unless it's actually parked in the garage, because according to my pictures on my phone, he has no way to get that truck behind the house.
So the way, and please, I know you are well versed in all the bylaws, so the bylaw allows a, a commercial vehicle to be parked in front of a property if they're performing services for the property and/or, you know, like a landscaper type of truck delivery and that type of thing. It cannot be there for more than an hour at a time unless they're performing those types of services.
Okay, okay, all right.
Okay.
It seemed like you were okaying the truck and not the trailer, but if the truck is commercial, it actually technically needs to be hidden.
It still has to be screened. Yep. So, so we have a motion, it's been seconded, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay. So you'll get that to the planning director and we can move forward.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Second item, Mr.?
SPRW 2019-24, home office for e-commerce online retailer, request by applicant site plan waiver of home office at 95 Summers Road, Assessors Parcel ID 28-25-0 on .15 acre residential A zoning district. Applicant is Elvia Sergeal Wilson, 95 Summers Road, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Hi, would you like to come forward?
You can do a much better job of your name than I can. I'm sorry about that. I really am.
Olivia.
Thank you. Olivia, that was the easy part. Sorry again.
So tell us what you're interested in doing.
So having a home office for online retail, so everything is pretty much done online.
Yep.
You know, orders come in, I have my website set up, so all I need is the home office to type away.
So I'm sure you just heard that entire conversation we had, right, employer?
Yes.
No commercial vehicles of any kind?
Strictly e-commerce.
Okay.
Any motion to approve, please?
I, I, through the chair, I have some questions because...
Okay.
So it looks like there's shared driveway access?
There was, a little accessway, but we have our own driveway now.
Okay.
There's a cut one there, so we no longer use that.
So 95 Summers Road, I'm looking at a driveway here.
Right, that was a shared access with 99.
Okay.
And so that's no longer there.
How do you access your structure?
Do you mind if I, no? Okay, so a tree was there, so now the driveway is right here.
Ah, so you've added it in the driveway?
Yes, we added it in there.
Okay. All right. And so no deliveries?
No.
Of any merchandise?
No, everything drop shipped straight to the customer.
Okay. And hours of operation?
Regular hours, nine to five.
Eight to five?
Yes.
Okay. And type of retail is?
Apparel, clothing and apparel.
Clothing and apparel.
Yeah.
And the name of your retail establishment?
Fashion Warehouse.
Fashion Warehouse, okay. All right, so before you go, I need signatures, see the thing? We never get signatures. If you'd be so kind...
Well, let's vote on this first before she signs.
Yep.
So we have a motion, it's been, do I hear second?
I'll second that.
It's been seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay. So that passes.
Good luck with this.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
The signature here, right? Just here? Okay.
SPRW 2019-25, home office, Equin massage...
Oh, message.
Equin massage. Equin massage, sorry. I'm probably the wrong guy to be the clerk with the way I've been murdering all these words tonight. But in any event, request by applicant for site plan waiver for a home office at 35 Rockingham Circle, Assessors Parcel ID 31-42-6, a 1.06 acre site residential A zoning district. Applicant is Laura Petros, 35 Rockingham Circle, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Hi. Come on forward. Tell us about what you plan on doing.
So I am just, just getting certified to provide equine massage therapy to horses. So basically, I don't do any work at my home, I drive two different stables in the area, most of them are actually in Connecticut. And so at my home, I just am basically going to set up my appointments and screen my clients and talk to my, you know, do my billing and all that stuff, and then I will drive off. And I just use my own car, so I don't plan on getting anything written on it or anything, so that's it.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay. Off you go. Name up.
Yes, we'll give you a call when the site plan waiver is ready for you to go. Okay? Come back with us within the next 48 hours?
Okay.
It's all right? Good things.
SPRW 2019-26, addition of Blue Rhino propane exchange, request by applicant for site plan waiver for an addition to Blue Rhino propane exchange at 13 North Main Street, Assessors Parcel ID 27-37-0, 27-38-0, in the business district, zoning district. Applicant Pride Convenience, Inc., 246 Cottage Street, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Anyone from Pride here?
Yes.
Come on down. Hi. Can you tell us what you're planning on doing?
Sure. Basically, we would like, part of the, part of the process, we would like to install the cage, typical cage of Blue Rhino, seeing in many places now, pretty much standard throughout the industry. And we've spoken through the fire department, they've expressed favorability towards doing it with some conditions which we're willing to meet. Basically, it's, yeah, just a Blue Rhino cage, we'll put bollards and anything that else is required by the fire department on our side in East Long Meadow.
So I have a specific question that maybe you can answer for.
Sure.
So this is a picture of the west elevation of the property. So you're planning on doing it on this side of the building?
That is correct, yes.
So are they going to be on the concrete sidewalk, or are they going to be in what looks like no parking or fire lane?
Right, it'll be, yeah, it'll be off the sidewalk, it'll be, you know, right, right here, right.
Okay.
Yep.
So does that impact any parking spaces?
It should, it should not. If there's a corner right here, it's kind of hard to see where it's painted, there's a triangle. Actually, I believe...
Here we go, here's a plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, but I really couldn't determine it from the plan.
Correct. So it's actually going to go on the sidewalk, and this is actually was a little misleading. It's actually going to go on the sidewalk, the bollards would have to be off the sidewalk, so the sidewalk will still be accessible, that's what I was trying to say.
Okay.
So the cage will be on the sidewalk and the bollards will be off the sidewalk.
So you won't lose any of these parking spaces?
No, you will not, no.
Okay. Those were my questions. Any other board member have a specific question about this request? George?
I have a comment. I have no objection to the Blue Rhino being there, we see it all over the place. However, it is a change to the site plan.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm comfortable doing that as a waiver, because we don't intend to have the new site plan recorded, and there's nothing in the future that you go back and say it's still in the right place or whatever. It's just my own personal feeling, I think a waiver is a little too loose for change like this.
I don't have a problem with a waiver on this one. I mean, it seems pretty minor.
Right.
And I'm, I like to try to agree with everybody else, but in this case, I just, I don't really feel it.
Through the chair, do we have any other Blue Rhinos in town or propane tanks?
Our director told us that there's Rockies across the street from there, A.W. Browns. She's aware of...
There are no Blue Rhinos?
They're propane tanks.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah, propane.
And I think Rockies is more of a, actually a filling station as well.
So is A.W. Browns.
Exactly, yeah. Okay. So do I have a motion from someone on this one?
I'll make a motion.
To?
To approve the site plan waiver.
Do I have a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
So we have a motion that's been seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone want to oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. It passes.
Thank you.
Open your name.
My name is Hamilton Ramos for Pride Stores.
Oh, I, oh, it's nice to see you again, I'm so sorry, I didn't like you. We've always spoken, we've never met.
Yes, that's right.
That's right. It was nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you too.
That's the face you've been speaking to.
That's right, that's right.
Nice, he's the architect.
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So give us 48 hours on that, okay?
Thank you.
You, we have a continuance here.
Yep.
You want me to go ahead and read?
Please.
Okay.
Site 2019-05, proposed commercial development site for Shaker Road, request by applicant for construction of a proposed 2,500 square foot plus or minus bank and 5,500 square foot plus or minus commercial building at 244 Shaker Road, Assessors Parcel ID 18-35-0 on a 133,217 plus or minus square foot lot located residential A, business zoning district. Applicant SIVAD Development Partners LD at One Maric, Monarch Place, Place, Suite 1300, Springfield, Mass 01144. Continued from April 16th, 2019, June 18th, 2019, July 16th, 2019. I'm surprised you're here.
Good evening. Sophia from Arlevak Associates here with Attorney Jim Martin as well, on behalf of the applicants. Nice to finally meet you as well.
Nice to meet you.
We've spoken several times that I, they usually don't send me out, so here I am.
We got the A-team tonight.
Exactly. So pretty much just to sum up what's happening, we had prepared site plans for the last meeting and comments received, unfortunately, we received additional comments from the police chief regarding...
Last week, right?
Yes, I believe it was on Friday.
Friday.
Yep, and we tried to get ahold of him, tried to get ahold, and finally, we talked to him this morning. He expressed some concerns regarding two of the three entrances to the site. In order to accommodate and address his concerns, we do have to go back to the drawing board a little bit. He wants us to try to join the parcels to allow easier access throughout the two. Unfortunately, one of our stormwater basins is right in the middle of it, and then this also would bring up some conservation matters as well, so pretty much...
So we'll probably have to go to conservation before we can come back here to see if we can even do it to get a waiver or something like that.
We'll probably have to go to a subsurface solution. So we are working on it, we are trying to accommodate everyone's concerns and make sure this project works well for everybody, so just kind of wanted to come in and give a brief update. We are working on it, I know it's definitely been dragged out a little bit, but we want to make sure it's done correctly and to everyone's approval.
And so you may recall, the last time we came in here was because of conservation and DPW wanted us to do, move it to a subsurface, over to the side, and we did those plans and did that. Now the chiefs come along and say, you know...
But we finally got DPW approval, he was all set, so we're like, oh, good, we're So we're like, oh, good, we're all set. And then all of a sudden, the chief of police is like, oh, I don't think this is going to work out so well. So just want to make sure we look at everything.
Yeah, and we may not be able to do it because of conservation, but we're going to give it a try.
We're going to try.
Okay. So I guess we normally have continued like in two-week intervals, but I think we probably should be a little bit cautious with that to-
I would agree.
Because we got to talk to conservation, go back to the police chief, and then come to you folks, so.
Well, the next full hearing night would be-
Is it a month out?
September sixteenth.
Okay.
Seventeenth.
So it's about a month, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that should be fine.
And then if I know, I'll try to do the forty-eight hour thing or sooner, as soon as I know. If we need to continue again, we'll definitely send something out, but it's going to take a little bit of design.
So before we vote and it's a continued public hearing, do we open it to the public to see if there's anyone here who's interested in speaking on this issue? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing.
No, 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 please don't close.
Don't you?
They're making a motion to continue.
Well, they're okay with it. Well, I don't know, because I would take in the chief's-
No, we're not, we're not okay.
So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
To September seventeenth.
And do I have a second on that?
I'll have a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great.
If the people say nay, it passes. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you guys so much.
Good catch, thank you.
Yep, definitely, nice to see you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to see if someone would make a motion to take number seven out of order before we discuss the amendments to the rules and regulations.
Probably seven and eight. Oh, no, eight?
Oh.
He's already started.
Well, let's- I'll make a motion to take number seven out of order.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, would you read item seven?
A letter of concern received from Alice Widmer, eighty-one Harwich Road, East Long Meadow, regarding hidden ponds development. Oops, sorry, dear. Thank you so much.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
I'll let you know when we get done. I'm concerned about what the developer is doing in my backyard. I don't know if you care to see some of the pictures that, well, these are yesterday's.
More.
These are yesterday's.
Okay, great.
This is my backyard, this is the easement, and this is my private property-
Okay.
-where the water is running over my private property, not the easement. They're planning to put an easement, they're planning to use the easement that KV put into our backyards to collect the runoff of the water from what was in a farm area off of Maynard Street. It was never intended to support the water from a tarred road to runoff in one spot. The flow of water we experienced this year was enough to wash away much of my lawn in the area of the easement. I'm the last house on the street. They have not dug below the original surface of the ground to make any of the holding ponds, which is how most of the holding ponds are constructed in East Long Meadow and Springfield. At this point, they have brought in large and small chunks of redstone, placed them on the original ground surface. There is no sand or earth mixed with them. They had a very large machine that climbed on top of the stones and crushed it into gravel. As you know, gravel will not absorb the water, and since there is no dirt or sand mixed with it, it will not hold back the water and will filter into our land. The water will run out onto our backyards. Are you aware that the water is only running about two hundred feet in the easement, and then it runs onto my private property? And I have never given permission for that to happen. I suspect it might be against the law. I was advised by the office of Marum Healy, the Attorney General, to file a consumer complaint, which I have done, and I did talk to Richard Neal about it when he called on Wednesday. If it turns out that the water from this public road is allowed to runoff onto my property, the developer or town should be making sure the water that will filter through the gravel beds or come out there on that twelve-inch pipe will not damage my private property. Water running out of a twelve-inch pipe can wash away plenty of land and do a lot of damage. The easement cannot handle more water the way it is now. The area across my property is up to the top of the land and just about carried everything it put yesterday. Take a look at the easement and try to assist the needs to be done in our end. It's your responsibility to protect us abutters as well as to protect the people who are doing the development. And at this point, it's not happening. Please take a look at it. It's bad.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Certainly.
The photos look horrible, but the problem with the photos is I don't know what I'm looking at, but they don't look good. And my recommendation would be to have Kevin go out there immediately and meet with you.
Who's Kevin?
Our building contractor. And have you and him go down to where these photos were taken and have him get a good understanding of what you're talking about, because what you're talking about doesn't look good from these photos, but it's also very hard to tell what we're looking at from these photos as well.
Right, right.
And then, because if that's the case, I mean, this is not a good situation by any stretch of imagination.
I talked to the fellow who's in charge of roads, he came down and looked at it.
Tom Christensen. I was out at the site also with Felix the other day.
The other day. But it's just crushed stone, there's no dirt.
So can we hear from Connie, so what did you see and observe?
So what we saw was the beginning of the construction of a retention detention pond, and it was large boulders. So generally, what you do are large pieces of sandstone. So generally, what happens in the construction is you place the larger pieces and then you sift the smaller in to fill the gaps, so that that creates a barrier. They're not quite there yet. This, I did, we did not see this, this is shocking. So it was dry the day we were there, and I know that Tom has been monitoring the site, Tom Christensen, who is the deputy superintendent-
Of Public Works.
Of Public Works. I also know that Kevin Duquette was out at the site. And Kevin, this, at this stage, it doesn't fall under code enforcement, it falls under construction monitoring, and that would be DPW. So Kevin, it's not really his purview, not his call, not his place.
Whichever side of the pack.
Yeah, yeah. The only other suggestion that I might make would be for the planning board to recommend that this project be monitored by a consulting engineer under fifty-three G, which is peer review, and the applicant, excuse me, the developer, were required to pay for those services of a consulting engineer to monitor this project. Town of East Long Meadow has only so much manpower. They are monitoring not only the developments that are before us, the subdivisions that are under construction, but also the normal day-to-day routine of road maintenance, weather events, you know, they just don't have a large body, they just don't have the extra manpower. And in times like these, it might be a planning board recommendation that, to monitor your subdivision that you have approved, to engage the services of the consulting engineer to monitor the construction.
I did send you a picture of the machine on top of the rocks where it was being crushed, not on those, but originally. Are you one?
But it could be the same end result. We're confused in the photos, we know it's a bad situation, we need to go out and get a fix.
All right.
So I guess what I would recommend, I don't know how anyone else feels, but before I would, my recommendation is before we meet with the developer and tell them that this is a situation that perhaps is beyond your capability of managing, and we would require you to have an outside consulting engineer, that we meet with the engineer. Perhaps our planning director could do so and express the concerns that we have as a planning board after seeing these pictures and listening to your concerns, and that unless, you know, we get some type of assurance from them that the situation is resolved in an expeditious manner, then we would, I have to imagine, we'd have to schedule a hearing on that, because that would be a change to his, to our approvals for the project, wouldn't it be?
To engage the services of a consulting engineer.
Would be a requirement.
I can double check on that, I believe that you may at any time required, but I will double check, double confirm.
I was just wondering if you want to get a recommendation from the DPW if they think an outside consultant-
That's warranted.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would, that would be appropriate. We need to recall that DPW has already used a consulting engineer to review the stormwater management and has, that consulting engineer has signed off that there will be no additional discharges from the site under the design that was approved. So, you know, when you look at a construction, a construction project in process, it always looks a lot messier than it does when it's finally done. And I think that the, if, at a minimum, we should review what the consulting engineer said about the stormwater management, but I, you know, I don't know that monitoring the construction is going to do any good if they're still doing the same design.
So I guess what I'm thinking, if I could, so, I mean, you indicated that it's coming on your property.
Right.
And it should during the construction phase.
Right, during construction phase to not.
So that's my major concern.
Right, I agree.
Because essentially, your only recourse then would be to either sue the town or to sue the developer. We don't want either, we don't want the town being sued for any property damage that was done during the construction.
Yeah.
So that's what my thought process was.
Sure, no, I agree. I think, I really think it's DPW's purview to deal with this.
Mr. Richards?
That's what I was going to say. If we're going to be making motions, my motion would certainly be that this has to be fixed. DPW should report and let us know whether they're going to monitor it or they think a third party should be doing the work. And if that's the case, we'll go by their recommendation and act on it.
Shouldn't they be digging a hole for the water to sit rather than let it filter out through the redstone?
We're not engineers, we can't respond, but we can turn it over to DPW and have them to-
Well, you know that stone doesn't hold water.
Of course not. But DPW should, needs to give us a recommendation of immediately and let us know what to do next. Because it should not be going onto your property and causing damage, and that's what we want to stop.
No, it shouldn't.
That's what we want to stop. So you, would you please follow up? And would you please let the, know what's going on? Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah.
Alice, do I have the correct phone number? Have you been getting my messages? Have you been getting?
Five, two, five, six, nine.
Yeah, but you don't have to say it out loud, yeah. But you've been getting my voicemail, right? I've been calling, I've left you-
I'm sorry, but I don't listen to it every day. I just heard you at three o'clock this afternoon.
That's good, no, I just want to make sure I have the right phone number.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So can we take number, a motion to take item eight, the endorsement of modified subdivision plans for Bella Vista Estates?
I'll make a motion to take it out of order, number eight out of order.
You have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call it.
Number eight, endorsement of modified subdivision plans and other documents, case S.D.-D., two thousand nineteen oh four, modification of definitive subdivision plans for Bella Vista Estates, Phase Two, request by applicant for endorsement of modified definitive subdivision plans and acceptance of other documents for the elimination of the proposed Capri Drive wetland crossing, establishment of a temporary cul-de-sac between the Capri Drive cul-de-sac and Bella Vista Drive, removal of the section of the right-of-way between the Capri Drive cul-de-sac and Bella Vista Drive, revision of lots nine, ten, twenty-five, twenty-six to include the land previously occupied by the removed section of the right-of-way, and establish of a thirty-foot wide utility easement for proposed water and sanitary sewer utilities. The applicant is Bella Vista Holdings Realty Trust, Brian S. Fitzgerald, trustee, forty-six Center Square, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Hi. Good evening.
Floor's yours.
All right, thank you, thank you. Brian Fitzgerald here on behalf of Bella Vista Holdings Realty Trust. I guess we're here for the endorsement of the modified plans, and then just to give you an update, yesterday I had submitted documents to the planning director related to the extension of the subdivision approval, executed the conveyance of easements and utilities to the town, submitted the revised deed for the long mores, which is fifty-seven Capri Drive, because on their parcel on Capri, which is this parcel B, we had acquired the roadbeds of what was Bella Vista Drive and Capri Drive in a mouthy place, but when the long mores were deeded their lot from the prior developer, this part of the cul-de-sac was actually deeded to them. So they're going to be deeding this to the trust, and then we in turn will be deeding to them what is known as, there's parcel C, which is this little piece right here. And then there'll be the easement, utility easement that'll run across from Capri Drive over to Bella Vista Drive.
Hey, that's kind of interesting. What happens if they don't deed that over?
They, we have an agreement with them, they have to, so-
So you're all set?
So we're all set, yes, yeah, we have an agree-
You're very clad.
Right, right, we have, yeah, we have an agreement with them.
I never thought about that until right now when you mentioned it, and I said, gee whiz, what happens if that doesn't happen?
Yes, we have an agreement with them in terms of, you know, the gas line service had not been brought to their home, they were on propane tanks, so Anthony has brought the gas line service to them and-
Now, they're selling their parcel as well right now, right?
They're in the process of selling their parcel, yes.
Okay, so all this is going to take care before the sale?
Hopefully, yes, yeah, it should.
Hopefully?
Yeah.
You mean it will?
It will, it will, yes, yeah.
Okay, thanks, good.
I don't know if they're-
We'd like to use the word hopefully here.
Oh, well, I know, I'm sorry. Well, I just don't know if they're under contract yet or not.
But you're a lawyer, I mean, you know that.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Then we've submitted the revised homeowners association and declaration of maintenance covenant, and then finally, I think in terms of all the other items that can fall into place, the first thing obviously is that we have to get this recorded, and then we can record the other items that, documents that need to be, kind of make everything else fall into place. And then with respect to construction, it's ongoing, and then Anthony, I can defer to you in terms of just giving an update.
Yeah, we have the sewer line completed, the water line completed, water line was tested, and we also today flushed it and sent out a sample to make sure we can turn it on to the rest of the public water system, it's absent of any bacteria. We cut out the cul-de-sac, that should be getting paved Monday, and electric phone is going in as we speak, and optimistically, we should have pavement down beginning of September, a little tide.
No, I, yeah, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I have a few things I want to say. I'm intimately familiar with this project because I stare at it every day. I can't enter my house or leave my house without staring at this project, so it's on my mind all the time. So I have a couple of things I want to talk about. One is, we have a zoning bylaw where a developer cannot get a permit or dig a hole or do anything on any of his lots until the paving is down. And I understand that that's in the bylaw to protect the town in case a developer doesn't fulfill its obligations in the area, is stuck with a partially developed parcel that goes And in some cases, it could be in the town's benefit if the developer could post a legitimate bond to make sure that the town is never exposed in a situation like that, but at least getting projects out of the ground faster puts more tax dollars in the town's treasury quicker. So that's certainly a conversation that would be long, ongoing for a long period of time and can't, will never be resolved tonight. However, what if there were two lots that had access to pavement, and if the developer did have problems and couldn't complete the project, at least two of the lots could be completed? Is that something that could be discussed tonight, or would that also fall into the purview of what I just said a minute ago?
I'll defer to Mr. Kingston on that one.
If I could just add, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add before we defer to, I think what you're saying is because this is a public way, prospectually-
Right.
And that public access on these two corner lots-
Yeah, what I'm saying is because this is a public access, there's utilities in this road, there's everything in this road you would need, and this house can go here, this house can go here, at least get two things going for a number of reasons. One is, it's an eyesore looking at it the way it is right now, you know, but I get it, because I've created lots of eyesores myself in the same situation, so I get it, but at the end of the day, no one wants eyesores. And also, we want tax dollars faster, as fast as we can possibly get them, because we're certainly spending them quickly. So that's the genesis of my conversation, is wondering how everyone else thought about it.
As an interested taxpayer of that last company?
Correct.
I'm going to defer to George, who has the most experience on this.
No, I just want to make sure it's crystal clear, there's no way in the world I'm insinuating that the town should be exposed in any way, shape, or form, so I'm not, I'm not talking about cutting corners.
Really, it's because they're getting their utility services essentially from the main road.
Well, there's no reason, there's no reason why those two lots couldn't be completed regardless of whether the project moved forward or not.
And then I think, if I could add, if they are facing it publicly, you can get utilities if this never gets paved, coupled with the fact that if you, if the planning board was the vote this evening and allowed a building commissioner to issue two permits on lot nineteen and eighteen, with the stipulation that no certificate of occupancy would be issued until the covenant is released on Bella Vista. So it would be secured at all corners here.
So if I may, through the chair, we've been talking about this since January. So-
So what we have this evening is an irrevocable letter of credit. No, you may not release the lots that are on Prospect Street because of the way the infrastructure installation is occurring. So there are stations of the street. So the infrastructure is supposed to be in place. And that could be the water connection, it could be, you name it, whatever. It will be up to a certain station on the road. So if you release those other lot, those lots, but that particular water main, if you will, is supposed to service up to, say, lot fifteen and twenty-two, you have a partially construction, constructed water main. But the guarantee is to provide the service to these lots that are farther in. There's no connection theoretically to the Prospect Street utilities. That would be modifying the subdivision, that's just theoretically, theoretically. So what Mr. Carnevali has provided through months in savings bank is a letter of irrevocable credit so that he can have his lots released.
Oh, I didn't even know about that. I gave this big old speech and I didn't know about this.
We've worked on this a long time.
No, 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 hold on. May I just interject?
Wait, wait, can I finish? Can I finish?
All right, okay.
So we have been working on this and this question has come up repeatedly. And the way our subdivision regulations are constructed is that you do not release a lot from covenant unless there is a substitution of performance guarantee. That can be cash, that can be irrevocable letter of credit, something that guarantees that should Mr. Developer, and it would never be you, Anthony, I guarantee it, it would never be any good developer who would run away because there was another recession occurring in 2022 and not finish a subdivision. That could never occur again like it happened in 2008, never, never. But being a planner and having worked in this profession for a number of years and having attended many conferences and heard many attorneys speak, we are, it has been recommended solidly that we, as planners, do not allow lots to be released without a substitution of performance guarantee so that the town is not left in the real estate development business. That's it.
Yeah, we're not asking for a release.
No, so because you've provided us with a letter of irrevocable credit so that you can move forward, you'll be able to get your building permit to construct the lots to the point where it needs to be based on however you and DPW talk about the infrastructure completion. Okay, so we're good? We have what you need? Everybody, and again...
So that's good for how many lots and which ones? Does it specify?
That's what I'd like to add to it. It's just so there's some clarification. Well, we would have, at the very beginning, in January, we would have come to this board and provided you with an irrevocable letter of credit for up to the $937,000 that the DPW has stated that that's what it would cost to build this roadway. We would have come to you and provided you with that so that we could have all of the lots released at one time. The problem is, well, not, well, this is the problem. Essentially, under your zoning or your subdivision regulations, it currently says that as work progresses, you can reduce that surety down, okay? But my understanding from what's been communicated to us at other meetings with the planning director and with the DPW director is that the board now has a policy that there will be no reductions in the bonds whatsoever, no reductions in a letter of credit. So we had proposed the letter of credit initially because according to what I was told is that there's been a history of other subdivisions in town that have not been completed. There's cash bonds that have been placed there. If you know anything about doing the cash bonds, it's you have to open up a bank account, you have to get signature cards, and so on and so forth. It's an administrative burden. And then all of a sudden, if the developer comes in and asks for a reduction of that bond, then somebody then has to do the mechanics of, you know, reducing it down on the ledger and making sure that the ledger is appropriately marked up. So the letter of credit is a benefit to the town because basically, it's not, it's issued by a bank and it's irrevocable. And so there's no administrative burden. And then it can't be reduced unless and until, because the bank's not going to reduce it, unless the board, they have a certified vote in front of them that shows them that the board has authorized a reduction of it. So our issue is, is we would have been happy to come forward to the board and provide that irrevocable letter of credit with the understanding that we would have only had two, maybe three reductions down during the course of construction. So if you know anything about providing an irrevocable letter of credit, that is that you have to put up collateral. So when we get to this stage in terms of where we're at with construction, we would have had to put up so much collateral. So if to finish it off, it's a half a million dollars that's left that we're into it or less than that, then that's going to be tied up. And the board, as I understand, there's a policy now that there'll be no reductions until it's actually complete. So that means that half a million dollars would have to sit there for two or three years until you release it. So, and I want it clear in terms of the regulations say, the current regulations say that you, we could come in and ask for a reduction. But my understanding is there's a new policy that says no reductions.
So I'm going to, so a couple of minutes ago, I was going to defer to George as the person with most experience here. So I'm going to defer to George for your, for your comments on this.
I have no problem as long as the town has the security that it can be finished with the amount of money that we have. And that we rely on DPW to tell us how much that is. The, my understanding is the new policy, if you will, actually came from DPW, okay? They requested that we not reduce bonds or other sureties, okay? Until they were happy that, that was no longer needed, okay? And again, we have new, new people in DPW who have taken a look at the history of subdivisions in town and decided that this is their most prudent approach. Among other things, obviously, there's something called inflation that goes on. And it takes years sometimes to get subdivision done. And they don't know until the very end whether or not it's actually been done correctly. Because they have to go out and test the pavement and all that. We've had experience, bad experiences is all I can say, in the past. So, but if we have the proper security, I have no objection to allowing construction to proceed.
Oh, absolutely, if I may, through the chair. So what also had been omitted in the past were deadline construction dates. So we're very carefully monitoring the time for completion. So this subdivision should be completed by April sixteenth, 2021. And according to this irrevocable letter of credit, you will be allowed two reductions, two drawdowns. It's better if you call them drawdowns than reductions because when you're drawing down, it just says, hey, I've completed some of the work. I'd like to now have, you know, I'd like to be able to draw down from what is the total balance and allow you, town, to keep the remainder. But I can take that money and I can put it toward, because generally, that's what the developer's doing is he's putting it toward some other facet, some other piece of that development. So we clearly understand your need for drawing down. But I ran this by, excuse me, Bruce? Your irrevocable letter of credit. And is, they will evaluate, they'll go out and do the... When you request, you request for a drawdown and DPW will go out, evaluate the project, give you a punch list, and tell you how much you can, you must keep as a balance.
So if I'm hearing it right, from January to today, we've delayed construction of homes because now you are willing to do a couple reductions. Is that what you're saying tonight? Just so I'm clear in my mind.
You haven't accepted for the road, Anthony, either. You know, you've been working on it, but you haven't been ready to do, to go for a permit for construction, so...
So I'd like to ask Mr. Torsia if you have any specific questions.
No.
No, that's okay, okay. So Connie, I have a question for you. So one thing I took from Attorney Fitzgerald's opening comments where he delivered to you yesterday a long list of items. So have you had time to make sure that everything that's submitted is appropriate?
Yes.
Beats all the guidelines?
Yes.
It's ready for your signature.
We really are trying to get away from last-minute middles moving forward. So I want to make sure that you had the opportunity to review all of that.
I have everything ready for your signatures.
Okay.
And you should be good to go to sign this evening and endorse the plan and...
Okay. So do I have a motion on this item?
I can motion to endorse all of the things we need to endorse through this project.
Okay, one quick question before we go any further. What are we doing with the conversation about posting bonds, getting projects moving quicker before pavement's down and things like that? Is that part of this motion or is that not part of this motion?
No, this is specific to this subdivision. To endorse certain documents and plans.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it's clear in my mind what we were...
But I'm pretty sure that from the discussion, from the general sentiment of the board and the planning community development director, that this irrevocable letter of credit was placed for both planning department and for the DPW.
Okay, okay, so we, we just, but with respect to the irrevocable letter of credit, what I want to understand is, I mean, I submitted a draft form of it. So we haven't inserted the amount because, again, the original amount was from back in January, obviously, as construction has begun. So what we would do is, in order for you to sign off on that irrevocable letter of credit, we'd have to have the DPW director look at what's been done, come up with their estimate, and then have that from the bank and then present you with the formal letter.
So it sounds like our motion would be contingent upon a number provided to us from the DPW for that?
No, it would be contingent upon their providing the actual letter of credit.
No, no. So we have, we currently have, we have the cost estimate from February twentieth, 2019. So that is the figure that DPW estimates is necessary to be in place.
Yeah.
I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
That was from February of 2019. So what we've done, what we've done is, obviously, construction has taken place, so...
The bridge has been eliminated, the water line's in, the sewer line's in.
Right, so, and all of those items are listed on the construction estimate.
We're not bonding 938,000 or whatever.
Yeah, so at this time...
Well, that's something, that's a discussion that you're going to have to have with the DPW because based on my understanding with the DPW, this is the cost estimate.
No, it's not what Tom said.
So if you're going to be revising that, then we certainly can hold off on this. We'll have another...
That's what I was getting at, was that because we've gone along, we, you know, that was the original number back in February before we started, you know, the shovels in the ground and everything.
So obviously, ours would be contingent upon an approved number from the...
Correct, and that's what, that's the typical course. Is the DPW director looks at it, makes sure everything, and says, this is what's left to do. And then we would get approval from the bank and then present you with the letter, so...
But just so, one more, a little unclear, Mr. Chairman. Maybe you can clarify it for me.
I hope so.
I think you can, I think you can. Are we saying tonight, if I just go post that original 938,000? So tomorrow I'll get you the footage, get on the next planning board meeting, just post it, even though it's probably going to be, in reality, 350, would be my guess, I'm just guessing, okay? And then we get it paved and we come in in two months. Are we saying then DPW can then come up with a new number for the top coat and street trees and come in for a reduction?
A drawdown.
A drawdown?
Drawdown.
Now I'm hearing, because if I knew there was going to be two, I would have put this up in February. But irregardless, we're here tonight, we can't go backwards, we can only go forward. I want to understand, there can be a draw, there can be two drawdowns?
Well, Anthony, you should have had the conversation with Attorney Fitzgerald because he was the one who drafted this in regard to the two reductions and sureties.
But I was operating under the information that I was given that, that there would be no, we wouldn't be allowed to do any drawdowns.
Well, we're here tonight. We're here tonight.
So the question is, Connie, what Mr. Anthony has suggested is, as they do additional work, they have the ability to do two additional drawdowns on their irrevocable letter of credit as they move forward?
Two drawdowns based on this irrevocable letter of credit, that's correct.
All right.
Okay, so we would, we would, what I...
You have to, but you have to, again, with the caveat, the DPW goes out, evaluates the progress, the work progress, and then lets you know what they believe, based on their calculations, must be retained as a balance.
Correct.
But we would submit that, we'd operate, we're operating under the covenant, obviously, anyway. So the covenant is there. So we would, what we would do is go to the DPW director, allow him to be able to make the estimate, get that, get the approval through the bank, and then submit the official irrevocable letter of credit with that new amount, not... I just want it clear that it's the nine, not the 937,000.
So generally, what happens is the requests, because the planning board control, the planning board does control the bond. So you want to make a request to the planning board. So planning board, in turn, through me, asks the DPW superintendent to provide the estimate for, some call it a cost estimate, some call it a bond estimate, for the work that has been done, the work that is outstanding, and provides those numbers. And then DPW, through me, gives it to the planning board. And then they vote to approve the reduction or the drawdown. That approval is granted by the planning board, not the DPW. They provide DPW, the numbers rather, are provided. So communication is very important and we all talk. So we all know what is going on. But still, we can't leave the planning board out because they, this falls under their purview.
Yep.
Okay, under subdivision control law. So, and again, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we have a motion.
Yes.
It's been seconded.
Second, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So I will get back to you on this number so that you can draw up a new letter, okay? And we'll see what DPW says. Sound good?
Yep, that's fine. And then do I...
I'll let you know.
On the MIR, just in terms of...
So the planning board will sign, they'll endorse the plan this evening. Could you, I would...
All right. So then just in terms of logistics, in terms of recording, do you, other planners in other towns sometimes like to actually go to the registry with me to record all the plans?
Oh, no.
Okay, all right, so I just want to make sure. So I can, we'll coordinate picking up the MIRs. I'll get them recorded and then provide you with the recorded document.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Not to say it wouldn't be fun to go to the registry D with you, but...
I'm going to Texas tomorrow, so I'm...
Some owners like to go, so, yeah. All right, thank you, thank you.
Hey, you want to stop for lunch?
So this is signed, is this the one you want?
Eventually.
Oh, eventually.
Yeah, I think it's, I think they may need to still have some signatures there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Item six, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, propose amendment to rules and regulations for subdivision, submission of petitions and plans of subdivision. Section two, general 2.8 amendments. Purpose of this amendment proposed by the town of Easton Metal Planning Board and its planning community development director is to correct typographical errors established in lieu of sidewalk construction fund as an alternative to the construction, installation of sidewalks by the applicant developer. Clarify the obligations of the part of the owner ensuring infrastructure installed by the private developers, which includes installation of conduit for fiber optic cable, meets the standards of the utility providers. See attachment one for full text of proposed changes.
I don't think you need to read.
No.
So Connie, you're the individual who has drafted the proposed changes. So would you like to tell the board your thoughts on this?
Yes, thank you. So under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one Q, the planning board is given the authority to adopt rules and regulations for subdivision control. So when you consider your subdivision regulations, unlike a zoning bylaw amendment, this does not require two readings before the town council. It does end a public hearing through the planning board, recommendation to town council. These are your rules of procedure. So this evening, when you consider these text amendments, you will either move them forward and we will amend accordingly or, and they will be enforced upon, we, I don't think we have a 20-day appeal period. I'm sorry, I've just, no. But this falls under your purview and it's...
But I'd like you to discuss, just for the public, so what, what the impact would be on each.
So we have some... So we have some typographical errors under section six, design standard, 6.3 sidewalks. What we have under the, and I think it's best if I do read this piece, so, under the constructions, under the design standard, 6.3 sidewalks, it was written section 7.2.6 sidewalks, and it should be 7.2.5 sidewalks, so that was never caught. So that was a quick clerical error that we can fix. And then section seven, construction standard, 7.2 roadway construction standards, again, there was that same typo referring to section 7.2.6 sidewalks where it should have been 7.2.5. So those are pretty clean, easy to remedy. Under section seven, construction standards, 7.2.5 sidewalks, sidewalks shall be required, sidewalks, there is the word "may," and I would urge you, because we are in the process of adopting complete streets here in the town of East Long Meadow, sidewalks shall be placed on, instead of one, or on both sides of the street at the width determined by the planning board based on location and need for safe pedestrian circulation. The reason being is, we are, we are trying to be inclusionary, so people who use sidewalks are not only people who are meandering or enjoying perambulating around their subdivision, but there are folks who perhaps might be in a wheelchair, or perhaps wheeling a baby stroller, or perhaps just wanting to be on a surface that is safe and away from traffic. So having the sidewalks on both sides of the subdivision allows it to follow, for instance, especially a cul-de-sac, it allows it not to just end, and then where do we go from here? Well, we're in the road. So that's why I'm asking that they be placed, and should the applicant or developer decide they would like to request a waiver, then indeed they may request a waiver, but instead of "may," I would like to see "may" replaced by "shall."
So I'm going to, just, so I want to kind of separate these two. So let's just start with the sidewalk, potential revisions. Any members, before I open to the public, any members of the board have specific questions or concerns, or would like to make any statements on this?
Well, I will say, I am in favor of having them on both sides of the street. I also, though, wonder, as we proceed to, towards complete streets, whether we are going to need additional revisions to reflect the complete streets concept in subdivisions.
We may.
And what would those type of revisions be?
They might be to provide for bicycle lanes, for instance, okay? Something we do not require now, and something that may require us to rethink the width of pavement, which we've normally been reducing, may have to go up, and the question then becomes, with bicycle lanes, is the width of pavement that is required now that we sometimes waive sufficient, okay? And that's something we should have to look to DPW to advise us on, but that's a separate issue, but something that we need to think about going forward. I like the idea of things on both sides of the street, quite frankly, myself, because I deal with someone who needs a nice flat surface to walk on.
John, say it.
Yeah, I would echo that. I think it would be smart, just because if you're on a main road, there's, you know, I live, my father lives on Main, North Main Street, and that side isn't covered by sidewalks, so it is dangerous to, if you're trying on that side to walk and use the other side, it's usually a pretty busy area. I think my suggestion would just be, you know, I read the letter that the superintendent provided, I think it would be also smart, not only to consider adding sidewalks around schools, but also having sidewalks that, you know, if there's chunks of sidewalk, you know, sort of out here towards the southeastern portion, connecting places like Summers Road or Parker Street all the way, and not just necessarily partially, just, you know, just as I viewed the map, there's, you know, two or three areas that I think would be good to add in possible, add, you know, adding more potential sidewalk to some of those main roads there.
We can give those comments to the DPW. Mr. Richards, do you have any specific...
My comments would be redundant.
So I was, I think I told people last time, my first meeting was the development at the corner of Maple and Doite Road, and there was the need for the sidewalk to nowhere, and I was confused by that, and...
I remember that meeting.
Yeah, kind of, you know, the Alaskan Bridge to Nowhere, and then related it to. So I'm all in favor of the...
It was Russian.
It was Russian, okay. I'm all in favor of the development of the sidewalk fund, you know, you've heard me say I was on appropriations for 11 years, and we put money aside every single year for the sidewalk fund, and it was never enough, and the cost of sidewalks has ballooned, and how much you can do for a million dollars is nowhere near what you could do 10 years before, so I'm all in favor of that. I'm really kind of on the fence on one side or both, because essentially what we're doing by that is every developer's going to come in, and now there's going to be the additional cost, because essentially, if you, let's say you have 1,000 feet, and you could use 500 on one side, you know, there's that cost, and now we're really doubling their sidewalk cost. On the other side, which is added expense to the people who are buying the lots and development of the houses...
Well, the other side of the coin is, if the developers...
I don't know if that's more valuable.
Yeah, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but the other side of the coin is, is the developer's paying for a sidewalk on both sides of the street, and rarely is that sidewalk going to get used on both sides of the street. I would rather have one side of the street, instead of putting the sidewalk in, use those funds, put it towards the sidewalk fund, be using another part of town that will never get sidewalks, because it's an older part of town that doesn't have a developer still involved with that area, that neighborhood. So as much as I like the feng shui and the convenience of having it on both sides of the street, absolutely unequivocally I do, if we think we could use the money from the other side of the street to get sidewalks in another part of town where we don't have sidewalks, I'd like to think about that.
So is it worded in such a way we would be able to get his feng shui?
I think it's my feng shui, actually.
Because in all the years, in all the years I've been going to public meetings, I've never heard feng shui.
But you know what I mean.
I know exactly what you mean, actually.
I mean, you go down the street, it's odd, wait a minute, there's sidewalks over here, there's not over here, this feels weird, it doesn't feel...
Jonathan makes a great point, there are lots of, lots of major areas, major streets in town, with sidewalks on one side.
Yeah, and I'm noticing some of these side streets are, or there's main roads but more in the outskirts of town, I think we should, there should be more priority towards, I mean, I like that Pleasant Street, the proposal to link that up entirely would be an extremely good idea. We should be getting possibly, if we can, more pedestrians to set over our town, so if they can walk, there could be more activity even possibly.
And I want to use that money, and that on one side of the street, to get more sidewalks somewhere else where we don't have them.
So this is a public hearing, so I would like to open it to the public, if anyone would like to address the board on this issue.
I'm surprised.
Who are you?
I didn't expect this.
There's nobody here except me. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's how she thinks.
Wow!
That's true.
Wow!
The truth comes out.
Are you going to speak on this public hearing?
Depending on what you say.
Good evening, folks, Marilyn Richards, 342 Pinehurst. Just based on some of the discussion you've had, there is a sidewalk plan somewhere, and I thought that sidewalk plan was prioritized.
It is.
Okay, okay.
And we have copies of it.
And when the decision was made years back to include sidewalks in all subdivisions, empower the developer to put them in, the feeling was, we knew that there would be sidewalks that would be going to nowhere for some time, but eventually, hopefully, eventually they would connect, or important ones would connect. Just for discussion, I lived in a subdivision without sidewalks with a 30-foot rideaway, and actually, it was not a huge problem, because there was enough asphalt, if you're out there walking a baby carriage, or if you're on a bike, there's plenty of room for the traffic to get by, and everyone is safe. I now live in a development with a 24-foot width road and sidewalks, and I'll tell you, there are times when you're on the sidewalk and disrespectful, aggressive drivers coming around a corner make you almost jump to the side because you're that much on top of one another. Sidewalks are really still important, regardless of where they're located, whether it's a subdivision or out on the main roads. So that wasn't what I was prepared to say, but I wanted to at least comment on that discussion. One quick question, in the information that was provided with your agenda for tonight, under number one, section six, design standard, 6.3 sidewalks, is that number in green, I have 7.2.5, is that supposed to be 7.2.5?
No. It is supposed to be 7.2.5, so that first one, under section six...
Yeah, how does that fit in here? See, this is the correction that's being made.
Okay. So here it says, see, section 7.2.6.
Six, right.
So really, when you go to 7.2.6...
Would be street signs.
Right, it's 7.2.5.
Right, but, but what you have down there, there's missing a decimal point.
So under number one, so it should be, the typo should be 7.2.5.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Oops, I got it, thank you.
Is that what you wanted to talk about?
No. Not, are we, the question, what I really want to talk about is the language regarding the contributions.
Yes.
And I'm, if you're ready to talk about that, then, okay. When I, when I looked at the rules and regs for subdivision control, and I read the section on construction standards, and it talked about sidewalks shall be required, they shall be placed on both sides of the road, they shall be constructed as, according to the standards of the town, it's a pretty strong mandate for sidewalks in that paragraph. And then if you move to the next paragraph, which addresses the in lieu of contributions for the construction of sidewalks, all of a sudden you've got a statement where there's a plan in place to effectively waive a sidewalk that the paragraph before was strongly mandated, and there's nothing in between to sort of segue why you are doing contributions in lieu of the construction of a sidewalk.
From "shall" to "may."
Well, no, the "shall" is okay, I'm not asking, I'm not asking to change that, because I support that they should be. My concern is that there, the planning board has the ability to waive any of their rules and regulations if it's, if it's good for the public interest. And so if you are talking about waiving a sidewalk for good reason, I would like to just see some kind of a segue sentence that says, "In rare occasions, there are instances when sidewalks should be waived." In that event, then move to the next statement of how you would accept the dollars to be able to do that. I just, it just was, it was just sort of choppy to me, and I know what's going on, but if the, if a user out there in the community is reading this, and he's reading this one paragraph with a strong mandate, and the next paragraph says, "In lieu of contributions can be accepted to waive sidewalk construction," I'd want to know why that happened.
Isn't that really a case-by-case...
True, true, and so I'm not, so I'm just saying that if there was some sort of language that in rare, say, in rare situations, some sidewalks may appropriately be waived. Rationale, I mean, it could be, it could be just the size of the subdivision, it could be the topography of the land, it could be the width of the road, I mean, there are issues that could influence the waiving of a sidewalk, but without saying something, which you're, I mean, and that, you're allowed to do that, but without saying something, there is nothing to justify moving from the first paragraph to the second paragraph. Those are just my opinion.
Thank you.
The language for in lieu of contributions, I had a discussion, George, I hope you don't mind me saying this, I had a discussion with George before the meeting, because I was unclear about the word contribution, and are you folks in a situation where a sidewalk might be waived, is it a requirement that there be a financial contribution on the part of the developer in place of the construction of a sidewalk? And, I mean, I'm putting that, because I don't, I'm not sure what this means, or is it a voluntary effort on the part of the developer if he or she sees fit to say, "I won't put the sidewalks in because it's silly for three houses, but I'll give you $10,000 for your sidewalk fund." I don't know what the goal was for this particular piece, and where I'm going with that is, if it's a contribution, then there's no standard, it can be whatever is decided on a case-by-case basis. If it's a fee, then I was curious about what the process would be to establish the fee, and if it is a fee, then the council has to bless it, because it's part of the charter, that all fees that are not subject to general law need to be approved by them in the form of a bylaw. That's section seven of the charter. So, and I don't know if any of that fits, it all depends on what the focus is, and that's what I have to say. Your, your, your answer, Connie.
Well, let's just see, Mr. Martin wants to address these, the last public...
Yeah, come on, you're going to say it.
I wasn't planning on saying it.
Okay, you don't have to.
No, I know, but I did ask, probably before she spoke, this, these rules and regulations are referring to residential subdivisions, correct?
Subdivision control law, yes, it would be residential, but we also have, if you, if you have reviewed our subdivision regulations, when there is site plan development in a residential subdivision, or you adhere to site plan review, they are hand in hand, so if you're doing site plan review for a commercial use, so there are some parallels, there are some similarities, and I think that, what are you getting at?
I'm getting at the, the regulations which she has, that were originally promulgated in 1982 and are being amended, those were with respect to residential subdivisions.
Yes, and they were revised in 2001.
And revised in 2001.
Yes.
I understand the other processes for presenting a development that is not residential, but for these particular definitions and regulations, they refer to residential subdivision.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So...
You're welcome. Thank you for asking the question. Do you want me to fill?
Sure.
Okay. So I have, this in lieu contributions for the construction of sidewalks may be accepted as approved by the planning board and Department of Public Works and deposited in the town's existing sidewalk fund. We do have a sidewalk fund. This paragraph was drafted in partnership with Sarah Minard, my town accountant, and with the input from the Department of Public Works. For the planning board to understand the amount that is to be placed in, as an in lieu contribution, not a fee...
Okay.
Okay, contribution, that is arrived at through the cost estimate that is prepared by the Department of Public Works, that gives the planning board, or they make those calculations for the cost of the installation of a sidewalk, so the figures aren't pulled out of the air, DPW goes up, evaluates the subdivision, and helps the planning board those figures, and therefore, that's where that number comes from. And again, in lieu contributions rather than fees, we're not creating a fee, it's a contribution to an existing sidewalk fund that had been created previously, so we're working with what we have.
And that will not be a set amount each time we approve them?
That is correct. It depends, if there's, if there's 500 linear feet, yes, they're going to calculate based on the amount of sidewalk there is.
But I think it might, I think Mrs. Richards brings up a good point, where it might be just some clarifiers.
I understand.
Yeah, so like clarifying to say, a financial contribution for the construction of a sidewalk may be accepted and approved by the planning board, and put in just some language, as determined, or as recommended by the board of... or as recommended by the Board of Public Works and approved by the Planning Board? Some type of language like that as a clarifier?
I think it's there. And you want to be careful, because if you say, if you use the words "in certain circumstances," then you remove the level playing field, with all due respect. So we want to make sure we do not have a lot of fluff in our subdivision regulations. We want it to be straightforward. And somebody reading this would say, oh, okay, they've got a sidewalk fund in lieu. An in lieu contribution means, instead of money, we're going to do this. So it's a contribution.
If I may, that's what I thought of when I read that. I thought, there's no real narrowing of the playing field, so to speak. I think hard, sidewalks should be a hard, fast rule, unless there's a legitimate rationale for waiving them.
And that's where you catch that. So the Planning Board has the ability to grant a waiver petition, and that's found in another section. So anybody who's in development is going to know, oh, what can I do for, is there an opportunity for a waiver anywhere? But if you start to insert waiver, 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 it just muddies the waters. So waivers in one section, you can waive anything.
And I will, I will agree that I didn't read that back that far, so.
That's okay. That's okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So we've...
You're welcome.
I, if I'm...
Sure.
I, I also, though, think that the language of this section is not specific enough. You've talked about the Department of Public Works making an estimate. The contribution shall be in the, in an amount equal to the cost of the construction of the sidewalks as estimated by the DPW. But that doesn't say this. It just says, it just, it leaves it wide open as to what the amount should be. It does not say that should be equivalent to the length of sidewalk that's being waived, or anything like that. And I think that's, that leaves it open to, okay, it's 1,000 feet of sidewalk, and it costs $100 a foot, I'll give you $10,000, okay, instead of $100,000. I think it's a little too weak, in my, my personal opinion.
So if I may respond, let's read this again. In lieu contributions for the construction of sidewalks may be accepted as approved by the Planning Board and Department of Public Works and deposited into the town's existing sidewalk fund. So it has to be accepted and approved. Both the Department of Public Works and the Planning Board have to review those numbers.
But it doesn't say, excuse me for interrupting, but it doesn't say what the amount is based on. It just says it's, it has, the recommendation has to be approved by both departments.
I think that's when you have to look at the construction standards for sidewalks. So, yeah. And so you have to be...
It doesn't give you a basis for what that number should be based on.
So...
So what I, what I like, what I like to do is, so to ask Connie, based upon what you've heard, that maybe we tighten some language and we bring it up at the next meeting.
And I do want to go back. It says, does say sidewalks may be placed on one or both sides of the street at a width determined by the Planning Board based on the location and need of, for safe pedestrian circulation. All sidewalks shall conform to the material and construction methods as specified by the town engineer or in Section 701 of the design specifications. Sidewalks shall be shown on definitive plan. Sidewalks shall be constructed before a certificate of occupancy is signed. And then we start with in lieu contributions.
So I think there's a general agreement that we generally support the concept here. No question about it. Perhaps, George, you could take your revisions and...
I will, I will give Connie my suggestions and see if we can, you know, without getting too specific and without being redundant, put in just a little bit of language that says what the basis for the contributions shall be, okay?
Okay.
And so that it doesn't allow us to negotiate too much downwards, okay? Right, because you don't know, you don't know what future DPWs may agree to, okay?
So I'd like to shift now to the issue regarding the fiber optic conduit design systems. So Connie, would you like to address those?
Yes.
On attachment 1.
So we are at...
3A.
Clarify the obligations on the part of the owner ensuring the infrastructure installed by the private developers, which includes installation of conduit for fiber optic cable, meets the standards of the utility providers by the following text amendments. So we are opposing to amend Section 2 General 2.10, coordination with municipal departments and other agencies to read. Compliance with the, with the applicable regulations and requirements of these agencies and departments shall be required before a plan is approved by the Planning Board. And certification of performance relative to the proper construction and installation of respective utilities shall be required before the performance guarantee can be reduced or released. That's what it says currently. The IT director has proposed language that he feels will be helpful for the installation of conduit for fiber optic cable as we move to, into the next millennium of technology. He has asked that the owner shall be responsible for contacting utility providers for inspection to ensure the infrastructure installed by the private developers, which includes installation of fiber optic conduit for municipal use, meets the standards of the utility providers. The owner shall provide certification by the utility providers to the Planning and Community Development Department before the performance guarantee can be reduced or released. So we're looking for communication from Verizon. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to use the name, but stating that this is acceptable. Because we don't want to dig up our streets.
So what I took out of that were three words that really struck out, that stuck out to me, for municipal use. So, and I think that we've asked, and I know that, I think you've kind of asked Mr. Quimby to come to this board several times and discuss this issue because I think we were all questioning what, what the needs were and what is currently going on, and I don't see him here this evening. So I, for one, still have a lot of questions. I don't know if, I don't know if we, as a town, want a mandate that we're paying for fiber installation for the town, unless it's a normal, because I don't know all the particulars. I guess when they put in fiber, I don't know if there's other requirements that they have to do, phone and cable, and, I mean, as a developer, you would know those questions, but have you seen any other municipalities?
I just, I just ask the tech guys in the town, is they, what's the protocol?
So that's, that's...
That's it.
Normal course of business in municipalities?
Yes.
Okay. Nice to meet you. Okay, thank you.
So we are moving toward, in our planning initiatives, the awareness that, and I'm not an IT person. That's not my area of specialization. But we're moving toward 5G. We're, and Jonathan, you can probably describe our needs better than I can, given you're the general...
It's moving, yeah, it's moving very quickly in that direction. I mean, we're trying to get people on broadband out in this area. Now we're moving towards 5G, and that's been a major push to just bring us up to speed globally because we've sort of been lagging behind on that front. But I think it would be, to echo what Russ said, I think it would be a really good idea to get maybe Ryan perhaps in here just to give us a little bit more insight.
Yeah, we need guidance.
Because none of us really are, I mean, I'm a little, somewhat tax happy, but it would be good to have somebody that's, that is an expert at this specific type of, just to give us the insight of why this should be put in place and what the necessity.
And I, I guess a question I have, is it to, to enhance the town's network or the residents as well?
Well, if we don't further... Amend Section 5 Definitive Plans, 5.3.2 Plan Profile E, Electrical Telephone and Cable TV Supply System, including pipe and handholds, transformer, transformer pad mounts, and similar equipment to read. Electrical telephone, municipal fiber optic design conduit and table TV supply system, including IP handles. So the need is there to have municipal fiber optic design conduit, I believe, for many reasons. Our sewer and water is red via, I want to say electronically because that's the catch-all term. I think moving forward, we will see so much more use of fiber optic infrastructure that we don't want to be behind the curve. We want to be either maintaining speed or ahead of it, or at least in the pacing with what is the current need. And I do understand that this area is exploding. It's just exploding.
So this is an additional public hearing. So if there's anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this?
And you know, Bethany might be able to speak to it, no? That's not your thing.
Harry Dunn? Okay.
Sorry.
So is there, what's the board's...
I would like to hear from the IT department, and that's certainly Ryan, but somebody from IT, what this municipal cable is all about. Because I know they use cable to connect to the pumping stations and, you know, those things. But in a subdivision, I'm not sure why they would want to have, what municipal cable means. And I'd like to get a clearer idea of that.
I mean, why, does every house need to have a municipal cable? What's up with that? I mean, I mean, if we're going to prehistoric times. I mean, where everyone had to have a wire to their house. I mean, you just, I mean, well, I think, I think we need clarification.
No, I guess my point is, is if there's, if there's cable, let's say along North Main Street to a pumping station.
Yeah, that's something completely different. I'm talking about like Benavista. He's got 17 lots here. What do these guys need all this for?
Well, that's what, that's what...
Yeah, that's why I want the IT guy here. I mean, we're trying to make decisions. We don't even know what we're talking about when it comes to IT.
I, I agree, that's a perfect example.
Yeah, exactly, exactly what we're talking about.
So all they're looking for is the conduit to be placed so that the land doesn't have to be disturbed again.
Look, I, I still want some clarification as to why they want it placed.
All right, so we want another plastic pipe and someday someone will figure out what should go inside of it.
Well, I, you know, we, we're talking about cost.
Yeah, I mean, I could be wrong, but I think the need, I think the need to put it in that plastic pipe might be there now just because, I could be wrong, but the 5G is coming up pretty quick.
Yeah, I'm not sure that these...
I don't know, I don't know if we're talking about...
Or...
Well, it's probably...
It's not municipal use, is it? In a subdivision like this?
It could be.
I mean, I, I think 5G, I would interpret 5G as like, almost as electricity or water. I think it is, in my opinion. I could be wrong, perhaps. It could be a municipal use. It's, that's not been the case, you know? The expansion of, you know, cell service and, you know, Wi-Fi and everything is very new. But I think it's becoming more of a public utility now, and not just a luxury or something certain people have, you know?
So I guess we'd like to be more informed.
Okay. I will invite Ryan to attend the September 17th meeting, yes?
Sure.
Or even, or even a representative.
September 17th.
I, I would like a motion to accept the changes under the first paragraph.
Which first paragraph, Mr. Kingston?
The one, direct type of graphical errors, and move it to shall be on both sides of the street.
Okay. So I have a second for that. I'll second that. So we have a motion, but second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to continue this hearing to the 17th so we can get the wording worked out and get some additional information from the IT department.
I'll second that one.
So we have a motion, but second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would like to say, however, that was a very good discussion. There's a lot of good discussion in that.
I'm sorry, I don't know more about it. It's just not my wheelhouse, you know?
Item 8?
We did that one already.
Oh, update of progress on mixed-use bylaw.
Yeah, you're in number...
Nine now? Okay, nine. Is there an update?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. The zoning bylaw amendment for the mixed-use zoning district, it was referred to the Subcommittee by Town Council, the Planning Matters Subcommittee on 5/28/2019. And the Town Council will next hold a public hearing on September 24th to discuss the mixed-use zoning district, we believe. That has not been set in stone, but we are, they are targeting September 24th. And they haven't met since, since June, early June to discuss because of the change, again, the change in government, the election. Excuse me, it's been May, pardon me, 5/28. And because of the change in government, there's just been a lengthy process. But I believe their Subcommittee is set. I believe Mr. Starks, Sid Starks has been nominated and approved for the position, and we should be able to move forward. I also have an update on 330 Chestnut Street. That was Zero Peas Road. I, pardon me, not Zero, that was the Rear Peas Road. And that went back before the Subcommittee on 5/6, Town Council tabled on 5/28. The Subcommittee reported to Town Council on 7/2, and they anticipate a public hearing on 9/10. So the solar, I know.
Are you kidding me?
No.
June, July, August, seriously, nothing's happened? I mean, I mean, that's, I mean, that's the end result. Nothing's happened in three months.
But we do have a nice spreadsheet going now to keep track of these things.
Well, I don't care about the spreadsheet. I want something to happen. Oh, I know, I understand that. I'm, I'm...
Don't shoot the messenger.
You know what I'm saying.
That's okay.
Come on. It is a big deal. We get tax dollars and everything else, and every month we put this off. There's more, if it doesn't hap...
Any other business properly before the board? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have to sign some things, right?